Public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Beth McLennan, Matthew Rogers, and Scott Gingold. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Therefore, we have a quorum. Also present here tonight from city staff are Melissa Klotz and Dennis Marino. This is a formal hearing and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time without interruption. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff and the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address and put your name on the pad that was provided outside for that purpose. We do not have a court reporter, so it is imperative that you speak into the microphone so that your testimony and statement can be recorded. We are audio and visual recorded in this room. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. And I would also note that Member Weinberg has also joined us, so thank you. And just as a point of clarification, we had a continuance from our previous regularly scheduled meeting on March 6th for 26-27 Lincolnwood Avenue. And we just want to clarify that that petition has been withdrawn at this time, so we will not be hearing any further action on that case. And next up is approval of the minutes from the March 6th meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review this?
I have a number of suggested edits.
Please.
On the 1704 Gray Avenue case, and I'm happy to pass these around just so you can follow, but in the, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, I would suggest that we change the word "create" in the first line to "discuss," and change the word "would" in the second line, which "would make" to "which might make," and then add the need for the minor variance and appeal moot. Again, I'm happy to pass these edits along so you can see visually what I'm reading. Also, in the next paragraph, I think the first two sentences are not accurate, and they also weren't germane to the resolution, so I'd just recommend that we strike them from the minutes of the meeting. They had to do with legal standing, and I don't think that's really within our purview, but it also wasn't germane to the outcome. So I don't think they're accurate in any event, and recommend we strike them. And then the last sentence of that paragraph, I would change it to read in its entirety. "Mr. Gingold suggested that a recorded easement might stick with the property and be a permanent solution, comma, and recommended that the appellant seek legal counsel." And then the last edit is in the last paragraph, I'd change the word "establish" to "explore." I'll pass my written suggested edits down if you guys didn't follow that.
I think I'm okay with an amendment, the last paragraph we were talking about that begins with Chairman Summers, with an amendment to that. However, I do think that I was trying to clarify if the ZBA had legal authority to even hear the case, which was basically the, I would say, the gist of what I was going at, what I had asked him was if we had any standing to be even hearing the case because of the way it was.
I'm happy to look at the sheet I just passed down, but I don't think it was written that way. But either way, I don't, we didn't-
No, I'm not saying it necessarily was written that way, so I could definitely see a, I could definitely see an amendment, you know, an amendment to that. However, I did see clarity from Mr. Cox regarding whether or not-
The answer that's down here that Mr. Cox gave is not an answer to the question you just reclarified. So I don't know, maybe you want to go back and come up with an amendment for those two sentences?
Yeah, I think, I basically was asking him whether or not, you know, because of the legal standing, if we had any, if we had the ability to make a decision, if we had a legal standing to make a decision on it. And then, and then in response, I think it's partially correct, he basically said that in the absence of a judicial decision or a recorded easement, that we have to work on the information, we have to, we have the information to work on, we have to work on the information that we have, so we can't, so we're not going to consider those things. Like, we have the right to, I'm not making myself clear.
No, you are, but I don't, I still don't think that's what he said in response to your question.
Okay.
I think what he said in response to your question-
Need to review this, maybe?
I think what he said in response to your question about whether the board had standing to hear it was that it was an appeal, and so we had standing to hear it based on the evidence in front of us. But the answer that's in the minutes has to do with Mr. Webley's standing to pursue relief and not whether the board has standing to hear his appeal, which is why I was confused about it.
I see. It's, so it's kind of, it's still a conversation that was had in terms of the fact that he did state that, he did basically state that he would need a judicial decision or a recorded easement to have that legal standing, but that's not necessarily the answer to the question that I asked you're saying.
Right, that is not an answer to the question you asked.
I don't know if this, I don't know if this sounds like something that we're just going to come to a quick answer to here then. Do you want to-
I don't know if you want to reconsult with Mr. Cox on what the minutes should reflect there.
Well, we have the video, I presume, so we can-
I just recommend we strike the two sentences, because they don't make sense as written. And they weren't, again, they weren't germane to the outcome of continuing the matter. Rather than try to put down something that may not be accurate, since the video rules anyway.
Would you guys like me to review the video and adjust the minutes and bring them back at the next meeting for approval?
Yeah, yes, because I'm fine with striking the aspect where it's not necessarily germane, although I still think it is, I think it is, I think it's relevant to record the aspect in which Mr. Cox explains that we have jurisdiction, and, you know, that we are supposed to hear that case based on the information that we have. And I know that that was a general thing that came out of that discussion, and I don't know how to accurately record that, having, you know, not having the video in front of me, but I do think it's relevant that it's clear that, it's relevant that it be clear that absent a judicial decision or a recorded easement, we need to move forward on the information that we have.
No, those are, the judicial decision and recorded easement were in response to a different question. They don't have to do with the board's standing. Why don't I propose this? Why don't we have it read that you questioned whether or not the board had standing, or jurisdiction to hear the case, and Mr. Cox advised that we had jurisdiction to hear the case on the record presented?
All right, I think we can clarify, I guess, further.
The stuff about the judicial decision and the easement had to do with what Mr. Webley might do if he wasn't happy with the outcome of our decision. He could seek a judicial decision, or if he had an easement, he could pursue it that way.
Yes, however, but it's also, it also is relevant to us, because it's also, we can't consider, we can't consider his rights unless he has one of these two things. Correct?
I don't think that's what Mr. Cox was advising.
Well, then, I guess I'm a little bit torn, because I don't, I guess I didn't understand him then.
So since we continued the matter for a further date, why don't we just strike the two sentences, and Mr. Cox can clarify his legal advice on the next record, and we can rely on the video record for this meeting? Or we can take Melissa's suggestion and have another version of the minutes to look at three weeks from now?
Why don't we just have, why don't we just have Mr. Cox clarify what he said, along with the, along with the video? And I think that, I think that we can separate these items, and he might, from his vantage point, he might be able to give greater clarity into separating these items into the appropriate paragraph, you know? Maybe this is actually two paragraphs, because it's two separate issues, and that's what needs to be happened. But I suppose I didn't understand what he was trying to say, and I don't want, I think it's an important issue, and I don't want to presume to, if I didn't understand what he was saying, then I don't want to presume to understand what he was saying. So if it's okay, I would like to continue to carry over approval of the minutes until he can clarify what he said.
Sure, that's fine with me. I'm going to pass my other suggested edits to Melissa incorporate.
I think that works fine, yeah. So we'll continue review of our meeting minutes for March 6th on to our next meeting, and we'll move on to our new order of business, which is 2125 Ashland Avenue.
Kevin Taboric, Lisi, for a special use permit at 2125 Ashland Avenue to operate a commercial indoor recreation facility, fitness establishment known as CrossFit. 2125 Ashland Avenue is located in the MXE Mixed Use Employment Zoning District, which requires a special use permit for commercial indoor recreation. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the final determining body. Submitted with the application and placed as documents on file are: Special Use Application submitted February 24th, 2012, Standards Form, Zoning Analysis, CrossFit E-Town Letter, Plaid of Survey dated March 1st, 2004, Floor Plan, Image of Property, Zoning Map, and Spark Meeting Minutes dated March 7th, 2012.
Could I just have anyone who wishes to speak to us on this matter stand up to be sworn in at this time? Could you raise your hand, please? See, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. And then if we could have the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Taboric. I have a small presentation to give to you guys. I don't know if you guys received it before the meeting or not. I have paper copies if you'd like one. If not, we can use a digital one.
I don't think we did.
You did not receive it.
Would you guys like copies, your set?
No.
I think we're okay for now, so let's give it a shot without.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time this evening. We'll try to keep this short and sweet, since we're the only ones on the docket, and you guys can get out of here as fast as possible. CrossFit E-Town, again, my name's Kevin Taboric, Evanston resident. My wife and I have lived here for five years. Two other members of my team here are Patrick Curtis and Debbie Saban, who's also a resident of Evanston, your whole life, actually, correct?
Yes.
There we go. So why are we here? CrossFit E-Town, that's why we're here. CrossFit E-Town is going to provide three things to the area. Number one, fitness. CrossFit E-Town provides a structured setting where individuals discover themselves through fitness. We're to plan to offer hour-long structured courses for small to medium-sized group personal training classes. We're to provide a community, both a community for our athletes, as well as we're to help bolster the surrounding community through having members of local residents, students, and Evanston's first responders. Enterprise, our location's a perfect setting for the type of fitness we do. Also, through introducing new members to this area, our neighboring businesses should see an increase in potential revenue due to shared support services and needs. But what it really comes down to tonight, our current business license that we have received, thank you very much, which is great, limits us to 10 students per class. And 10 students per class is not sufficient for us to operate our business and turn a profit. Quickly turn this over to Patrick Curtis, just to talk quickly about what CrossFit is.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Curtis, and in regards to CrossFit, I've been a member, coach of CrossFit facilities for at least the last four years. I've coached in North Carolina, Chicago, and now Evanston. And specifically what CrossFit is, it's the art of not specializing in any one thing. We take many different ideas, powerlifting, gymnastics, speed and endurance training, and we teach things to people that allows them to, first responders or military to do well in combat zones, to carry over to sports and daily life, as well as personal endeavors they may choose, like running their first triathlon, or being able to help out with their children and play with them. One of the things that's unique about CrossFit is that it's scalable. We can take anything that we provide on a daily basis and make it as challenging as possible, or scale it down so that any person can complete that at the same level of intensity. So we're not excluding anyone based on age, physical capacity, or, you know, time of day. The other thing is that it's measurable. We use a system of workouts that are benchmarked or driven to produce data, looking at scaled, sorry, excuse me, we score workouts. So it may be the number of reps you've completed in a certain amount of time, the amount of time that it's taken you to complete a certain set of skills, and that way we can then use that over time to then track how well you're doing. This is unique to fitness facilities, because most people go into them, and they kind of mill around for an hour or two, check themselves out in the mirror, and drink some water. Well, we're asking people to do something that's very powerful and gives them quick results. And then, again, repeatable. We use benchmark workouts, so that maybe what you do today, I'm going to ask you to repeat in six months, and then a year, and then a year and a half, so I can exactly track where you've gone over the course of your experience with our facility. And there's a quote here, "Tough enough for the Marine, but scalable for the Queen." So that's from CrossFit London. One of the things that we really do a lot with CrossFit is community, building community within the gym, as well as outside of the gym. And some of the things that we do to help in the community is, one, we offer programs for children. Specific to children, we scale all of the things down and make them applicable to children from the age of four all the way up through 16 or 17 years old. We teach them how to have respect for themselves, identify goals, and actually help them actually get better for their sporting events, or just have fun and give them a place to be. Steve's Club, which is a really interesting thing that I actually have never seen any other organization do, it's a program that provides low or no-cost memberships to youth children, where we give them a responsibility within the facility, they start to identify with the facility as something that they belong to, and it gives them a sense of responsibility and ownership and pride, which then we hope they get to take out to their daily life and to their friends. We work with people in nutrition. We teach them about healthy eating options and how to change their lifestyle through making better choices nutritionally. We involve CSAs, or Community Supported Agriculture, and local, we support other local organizations. We try to bring in organic or fresh food sources from the immediate area, specific things that are in-season, as well as fresh meat, and we try to get the farmers to work with a lower cost on those. So people in the neighborhoods who may not be able to get to the more expensive stores to purchase these items can pick them up and purchase them for their families. As well as local charities, we, if you refer to the next page, there is a series of just a small drop in the bucket of the charities that we contribute to. Wounded Warrior Project, Live Strong, Barbell for Boobs, it's a workout that we do a certain number of reps of a maneuver called a clean and jerk, and you raise money, and all of it goes to breast cancer awareness. Navy SEAL Foundation, we support families of wounded or fallen special operators and give them college tuition, rebuild their homes or their vehicles to give them better access to things like that. The 31 Heroes Project, that was the new one this August, that was after the helicopter crash in Afghanistan, killing 31 of our brave men and women. And then the 9/11 Disposable Heroes Project, we raise money to give back to the families of firemen. And then we're always looking for more, you know? We love doing events like this, so if we can find some in the area, we'd love to do it. And we also bring people in from outside of our area to participate in these. So again, bringing more people into the area is good for our town, okay? I'm going to now let this go back over to Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. So looking at our business, optimally, perfect world, we're looking to have up to 200 members. Is that realistic? Who knows? What we do need at this point is at least 100 members to meet our operational and financial goals of the business, to survive, to earn a salary, and to be an active member of the community. Daily operational goals include 80% of our total membership coming to class. That's pretty typical in a CrossFit gym. Unlike in LA Fitness, where people just show up whenever they want to, come and go as you please, revolving door kind of effect, we have 80% of the people, we train them to come at certain hours. They choose what types, what times they want to come during the day for structured class times, and it creates habit. I typically like to go at 4:30. Some people like to go at 6:30 in the morning. It's a habit-forming thing. So this size will allow our coaches and ownership to have, allow us to have personal contact with our members. That's really important for the community that we want to build. Again, it avoids overcrowding and involves the revolving door concept, in effect. Our class sizes are 10 to 15. That's ideal. Again, that allows us to work with our students and get to know them, and help them with their goals, and help them improve. And then, you know, we don't want any more classes, or classes bigger than 20. And we actually have a check-in system that caps the amount of students that can come to class at 20. The ideal ratio that we find in CrossFit is one coach per 10 students, again, so we get to know our clients and can work with them. So as I mentioned before, classes are registered in advance with a class cap of 20. Our class times start at 5:30 in the morning and end at 7:00 at night. We have eight classes scheduled at this point. Our biggest classes, or busiest typically in CrossFit, are 5:30 in the morning and 6:30 in the morning, as well as 6:00 at night and 7:00 at night. And this, these times are before and after the neighborhood businesses. So our students will be coming in the morning and leaving before classes or before the businesses are open, thus not having much of an impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Again, these numbers are determined by our financial needs and what we need to operate as a successful business. Currently, as I said, our business permit only allows us to have 10 students per class. That doesn't work. We need that to be zoned properly for us and for you, so we can be a proper business, operate effectively, and be a successful business and a contributing member to the community. Debbie, you want to come up and talk a little bit about your changes, and then we'll finish up here?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Boho-Saban, and I'm here as an owner and as someone who has been really affected by CrossFit. I was introduced to CrossFit about four years ago at the age of 51, when my trainer said, "Look what we're going to do," and I said, "I can't do that." And he started talking to me a little bit more, and I started to think outside of the box and get a little bit more comfortable with it, and once I started doing it, there was no going back. So I am so interested, now that I'm 55 years old, born and raised in Evanston, and all of my friends, many of them are still here, I'm really looking forward to getting them involved, because it's truly more than just the physical aspect. That's huge. I mean, I have measurable things that have changed, weight loss, off-medicine, lower cholesterol, that's wonderful, and the physical aspect of CrossFit is wonderful. To me, the other things that mean so much more are the things that impact you mentally. I'm a school teacher of 33 years. I use the whole CrossFit philosophy about how you approach life with my fifth-grade students. I'm a clinical social worker of 20 years. I use the same kind of philosophy with my patients. It truly is life-changing, and I could see it definitely impacting many residents and, as Patrick and Kevin have said, the surrounding community. Thank you.
So that concludes our presentation at this point. I don't know, we open it to questions now, or what's the next procedure? Sorry.
It's a good thing I'm here.
Sorry. Can you go back to the community slide that you had?
Sure. Yep.
Yeah. Can you explain just in a little bit more detail about the food on site?
The nutritional, or the CSA?
I guess I didn't fully follow.
Okay. So we're not actually going to serve food? No. What we do is we create a point, a stop for CSAs, and what they do is they can or will bring in, so there is a farmer a little bit north Wisconsin, his company's called The Meat Goat, and he raises sustainably-raised, grass-fed beef. And what he can do is, he will reach out and ask, "Do you mind if, is it okay if you provide me a place where if people order from me in the Evanston area, or wherever you may be located," there's a bunch, there's like 20 different spots in the city, "where I can come in for 10 minutes and people can meet and pick up the food items?" It's not that we are actually going to be housing any of the food or anything like that, it's just a drop point. And so if it is available to people in the area, you know, hopefully that they could take advantage of that. Did I answer your questions sufficiently?
You might, it's sometimes more commonly like a, it's kind of like a fruit and vegetable club, only instead of it being dropped off at your house, you go get it.
Correct. There are a couple in the area right now, like Tom's, I think, is one of them, and they do like in-season fruits and vegetables, those kinds of things.
Did you have any more questions on that, Scott?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have several technical questions, as much fun as all the other stuff is. And I'm going to need one of you guys to be at a microphone to answer. First of all, starting with employee parking, just looking at your site plan, there's, it looks like there's an asphalt kind of parking area behind, behind where your space that you would, I guess, be renting is. Is that where employees would park, or is what would that-
Well, currently, I live a mile from the facility. I plan on running, riding my bike, seeing as though we're athletes. But yes, we do have five spots behind our building where employees could park, and there are only two employees, Patrick and myself. And then more often than not, there'll just be one of us at the facility at any given time.
Okay. And-
How many employees do you intend to have eventually?
Two.
That's it?
That's it.
You are capped at two employees.
I thought I saw that you wanted to have one coach for every 10 members.
Exactly. I mean, again, with Patrick and I have to double up.
Twenty per class, two coaches.
Right.
Two employees. Two employees.
There you go.
Two hun, I thought it said two hundred members.
Ideally, two hundred, two hundred members, that's our optimal wishlist item, but we're capping our classes at twenty members per class.
And there's only one class that goes on at a time? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So reasonably speaking, even if there was somebody else up front, though, or whatever, now we've got five spots in the back, okay?
Five spots in the back, correct.
So, could you clarify what use is in the, do you know what the use is in the remaining portion, what's the use in the remaining portion of the building that I see here? Am I, on the site plan, you guys are only using this rectangular portion at the top, right, or is this, is this a...
Let me give you a better picture of the facility.
I also have this plan, but they don't really jive, and maybe that's the problem. That's where I'm getting confused.
The second, the second one that you have is a better, better one for us.
Okay.
With the one with forty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, so the one that says JP Ashland Partnership at the top. So there's something wrong with this other one?
I've not seen that other one.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's a copy of the plot of survey or what that is.
It is.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a copy of the plot of survey.
That's the plot of survey with another building that is attached to that one.
Oh, so, yeah, look at the lot line that runs down the building. You see the property line, the down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at.
Okay, so I'm not reading that wrong. Okay, so...
It's just a zero lot line.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, is, then, is that not, is the other portion or the attached building all part of the same ownership, then?
Same ownership, but not, it's not our facility.
Right, okay. And then, so then, does that mean that you have access to use the parking, which is further south?
Correct. That is our, a lot that we will be able to use and share with the current business that's next door to us.
Okay, so then that gets me back to the use of the business next door.
What is it?
What is it?
The business next to us? It is a heating, I believe, oh, sorry, an electrical company. Our landlord's here, actually, he can explain it better if you'd like him to...
Okay, so it's an electrical company?
Yes.
Meaning not retail, they're contractors, so it's just their shop?
North Shore Electric, Electrical Contractors.
Okay.
But in between, there's a little storefront, in which West Side Art Gallery, they call themselves.
Don't we need him identified?
Yeah, we need, we should probably...
He's a sign...
This is not just one answer, sir. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings, sir?
Yes.
If you couldn't stand forward and give us your name so that we can get you recorded? If it was one short answer, we'd let it go, but...
I'm long-winded sometimes. My name is Philip Holm.
Okay.
Evanston resident from nineteen fifty-one. Worked at twenty-one oh eight Jackson, across the alley from this building, starting in nineteen seventy. It's a family business, and Dad and I purchased the buildings across the alley, of which you're looking at...
Okay.
Two drawings. One is a, a whole complex. We have three tenants in there.
Okay.
Then the simpler drawing, Rembrandt takes credit for that one. That's where they will be.
Right, so...
That will be in that one.
So in the, in the space that CrossFit is not using, we have North Shore, we have...
North Shore Electric.
North Shore Electric, and we have a, which is at the rear...
They go from front to back.
They go from front to back.
Along the parking lot.
Okay.
The parking lot is part of our parcel as well.
Okay.
And that's available to the workers and the guests of the tenants of the building exclusively.
Okay. And then there's a, something called, a small space called West Side Art Gallery?
Yes, that's up in the front.
That's also in there?
Right.
Okay.
And does North Shore Electric park their trucks there overnight?
Yes, they have a fenced-in area at the rear of the parking lot.
Okay. So they primarily park in the chain...
In the chain link area.
In the chain link area.
And they're the only ones who are, who have access to that?
Absolutely.
So, Crosstown E-Fit doesn't have access to that portion of the parking?
Correct.
Okay.
It's about the one...
Crosstown E-Fit Town, whatever.
I don't know, the back quarter of the parking lot or something like that.
Yeah, we can see that, thank you.
We do that for security for their trucks and so forth.
Sure.
Okay. So, how many, do you know, sir, how many parking spaces are left over in the remaining portion of the parking lot that CrossFit would have access to?
There are at least twenty outside of what they have chained off.
Okay.
And the, the West Side Art Gallery, it is comprised of three ladies. Have you ever seen any of them?
No.
Sometimes on a weekend, maybe, but...
Okay.
They are...
And what is the, what is the on-street parking situation on Ashland Avenue there?
On-street parking?
Can you...
It's, yes, I can.
Well, we'll get to you. Well, so that you can...
You can park all day long, you can park for a week.
On both sides of the street?
I know on our side, you can park a car or a truck and leave it on infinitum, unless there's a snow or a street cleaning.
Street cleaning, okay. Can you park on the other side of the street, too?
You can park on both sides of the street.
Okay.
I just am not familiar with the signage over there.
The rules on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay, but you can park on both sides, okay.
Right, and then there's a large parking lot, a block north, across the, across Ashland from the car wash, if you will.
Forty spaces.
Forty spaces there, and that's open for the community. That's the purpose of it. It's a public lot.
Okay, and then I noticed there's a loading dock. Will you guys need access to that? Do you have access to that? How, does that...
We do have access to it, but we don't plan on using it for anything. It's additional parking space.
In terms of hours, you talked about class starting at five-thirty, so I presume that you need to be open by five. Would that be...
Sure, that's fair, five, five-fifteen.
Okay. And if your last class starts at seven, how, how late do you think you would be there?
Classes are an hour long, so students would be leaving shortly after eight.
Okay.
Is that...
Monday through Friday.
Sorry, again, and our classes, again, I guess we didn't put this in our presentation, majority of our classes are Monday through Friday. That's when we have the eight classes. On the weekends, we only have classes in the morning, and there's one or two scheduled in the mornings on Saturday and/or one or two in the morning on Sunday. I don't know if we finalized our hours yet at this point, but we don't plan on being open more than one or two hours on the weekends on either, either day. And again, limited to the morning.
Okay. Yeah. Did any of the board hours have questions at this time before we hear from citizen comment? Okay, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if you could just state your name and address, please.
My name is Lisa Farrell. I live at twenty-one twenty-seven Ashland.
Okay.
And I am a non-invested party in this, so I can tell you quite honestly, I pay several thousand dollars a year to the city of Evanston in parking violations, because there is not enough street parking to park my car on the street when I come home from work, when I come home from things I'm doing on the weekends, because the street is packed. The people across the street, Rex's Doggy Training, Doggy Day Care, they are continually double-parked when they drop off and pick up their dogs, because there is not street parking early in the morning and late at night, which would be your prime hours that you're talking about. Five, five parking spaces behind your building, that would essentially cut off my one and only parking space, which is behind my house, if you chose to use all five of those parking spaces. The Jehovah's Witnesses, they have five separate congregations that meet five times on the weekend, and each one meets one evening a week. The city of Evanston allows them to park illegally in front of fire hydrants, walkways, and so on, leaving the rest of us no legal parking spaces, thus bringing in the thousands of dollars in parking violations. I would say that to bring in a two-hundred-member club would really put quite a pinch on the area. If you told them all to go and park at the lot two blocks down, which is what the area, what the whole basis of the business is, right? They're supposed to be getting in shape. That would probably solve the problem, but of course, we all know that's not gonna happen. So, I would say that this is really going to cause a problem, and I really don't have the money to pay another couple thousand dollars a year to the city of Evanston in parking violations. Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am, I just had a quick question. I think I got just a little bit lost there on one point, when you were talking about their parking spaces in, in your parking space in the back. Could you, could you clarify that?
In back of my house, there's a parking space cut out. I don't usually use it, because there's a lot of crime that happens there during the night, windows broken, things stolen from the car, but I could use it during the day, except that it abuts onto their parking. But if they parked two cars, which would bring them all the way up to the door, then I could park in that space and come out. If they parked five cars, that would, that would block off my ability to pull out of the parking space. They go like this.
Yeah, okay, so, but there, it's not, it's not a matter of them not parking on their prop, it's not a matter of somebody else parking on your property so much as...
If they took five cars and parked them all in their parking spaces, which I only ever thought they had two parking spaces.
Okay.
But I'm assuming that they're talking about parking two cars, and then taking two more and parking behind those two cars.
Okay.
Which would give me even less options as a place to park.
So, when you enter and exit your parking, do you have to go onto their property?
Yes.
Okay.
To back out of mine.
Okay.
Okay, that's where we're getting lost.
And one other question for you.
But you have an alley. But you have, your property backs up to an alley.
Right.
So it's not clear to me why you can't go from your parking space.
Parking spot is parallel to the alley.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your address again?
It's twenty-one twenty-seven.
Twenty-one twenty-seven, Ashland.
Just north.
Immediately north on the plan.
So your parking, your parking spot on your property is parallel to the alley and isn't large enough for you to park in it adequately?
Eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, it would be if it weren't for garbage cans.
One other question, since you live in the neighborhood, the parking lot that they're talking about to the south of their building, where the electric trucks have their own little corral?
Is usually filled whenever I, 'cause I pull into there to turn around and come back and try to park near my house, it's usually got electricity trucks in there and cars.
And do you, do you know how many parking spaces are there? About twenty parking spaces in there? Does that sound about right?
Maybe twenty, but certainly not that many. I mean, there are a few open, but not many.
Okay.
I thought it all belonged to North Shore Electric, because that's usually who's filling up the spots.
I have a question for the landlord. Do you know who's parking in that lot overnight?
There usually aren't any cars overnight in our parking lot. Parking lot is for the tenants and the tenants' guests. It's part of their rent. We, over the years that we've owned it, clear back literally to when Fanny had her restaurant, we made it available to her, her customers in the evenings, because there were no tenants in that building in the evening, and we had a great relationship with her. But that was, obviously, when the restaurant closed, they were gone, too. Nobody's supposed to be in there overnight, because the tenants aren't there overnight. There's another parking lot just to the south of ours, which is one of the churches on the street, and then the next lot to the south of there, the next two lots into the corner, is, two lots for the church to the south of that. So there are three lots that are church parking lots, south of ours, and then ours, which is adjacent to the building. And they're all, well, I guess they're not all sidewalk to alley, 'cause there are a couple houses that face on to Simpson there, but I know that the, the auto doctor who is on the west side of Ashland, they have made arrangements with one of the churches to utilize their parking lot during the day, and I know for a fact that they do the plowing of the snow for rent, and that's basically how that is. I'm amazed that a lot of tickets have been written to our neighbor, 'cause there was a, there was a van, not North Shore Electric, but one from a block away, that van sat right in front of our building for ten days, two weeks, without moving. So I'm sure it didn't get a ticket, and the signage apparently says you can park there as long as you want, whereas I'm over on the Jackson facing the Walgreens parking lot, our building is right there facing their alley, their exit from the parking lot. We have a two-hour parking on our street. Residents can buy a sticker. There's one resident on our street that buys a sticker, and that's it. I own a hundred feet and pay lots of taxes, and my wife says I live over there, but I can't get a sticker, so I have to park either on Simpson or come back out and move it after two hours or before two hours, 'cause I can't park in front of the building. So, when I saw that truck on Ashland sitting there for literally that long, I looked at the sign, and you can park there, unless it's snow or street cleaning, I sort of, I'm pretty sure anyway, 'cause I know that truck was there without getting tickets for that long. So, did that answer parking lot?
Yes, thank you. Ma'am?
It's not staying in one place that's a problem, it's leaving and coming back and finding a place to park when you come back, because the spaces are all taken up with all the other people. That's the problem.
Okay. But it is unrestricted, he's accurate in the fact that it's unrestricted parking?
Right.
Okay.
It's unrestricted parking. Anybody could park there.
Right.
Everybody does.
Okay.
What is the nature of the other residents, be they commercial or otherwise, along Ashland Are you the only...
Residential.
Residential resident?
No.
Okay, so who else is?
There's a three-flat across the street from me.
Which is the twenty-one twenty-four?
Yes.
Kind of an L-shaped building, or the one that's right on the corner?
It's next to the Jehovah's Witnesses, just south. It's a large building, maybe it's four flats.
Okay.
They have cars. Probably didn't pick up their mail. And then, on the next block over...
Going west or going north?
Going north. The Peacock Lofts are all residential and business, and that block is absolutely crammed with vehicles, day and night. And then, if you go turn around the corner, that's a similar building where people live and work. So yes, there are many residents within a two-block radius.
That don't have onsite parking?
No onsite parking, it's all street parking. Yeah, and then if you go north on my side of the street, across the street and go north, is more of the same. is more of the same. Several different buildings where people live downstairs, have their business downstairs, and live upstairs. It's all designed that way. It's all street parking.
Thank you. Any other questions before we have the applicant sum up? Did you guys have anything else you wanted to say, or any summary, or any, anything? Oh, by the way, sorry, just really quick, did anyone else want to speak? Sorry? Okay, okay. Seeing none, then, did you guys have anything else that you wanted to conclude with before we begin our deliberations?
One of the biggest things that I do think is worth consideration is that we are limiting our class sizes, and we are forcing people into very specific hours of the day. As Kevin had said earlier, we haven't finalized the class hours. We just know that we have an idea, and we're willing to help with the neighborhood and work, maybe to adjust class schedules as needed, potentially, to help with some of the parking and the flow. I think I've been in and around the building for at least, you know, three months now, and every time I've gone by there, there's been more than plenty of options to park in, the lot that's specifically attached to our building for our use. We had four vehicles in the back of our building the other day, doing some work, and they all fit facing west to east off the alley, without interfering with the alley whatsoever. There is a lot of, there is traffic coming in and out of the alley, because of all the different businesses, and we have not yet interfered with that. And so I'm not going to sum up, I'm going to leave that to Kevin, but I do want, you know, just to think about that, that we are doing the best we can to limit the numbers to where we can still function and be a viable business, but also be appropriate to the neighborhood without making as big of an impact as possible. And we have gone down the street and counted every spot that's available to us specifically with our building, as well as the 40-plus spots that are down in the public lot. Kevin and I drove in there today around 2:00, and even at the busiest time, there was still at least five to six spots available, knowing that we aren't even actually going to be having classes between 1:00 and 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the evening. By that time, I would imagine if you went over there, you know, an hour ago, there'd probably be even two or three times that many available spots. That's all. I've just been, I've been considering that as well, and looking around the neighborhood, just making sure that we weren't going to interfere or, you know, get in the way of people's residential lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Patrick summed that up very well there, and we obviously don't want to be a hindrance to our neighbors, because our neighbors are our community, and that's absolutely what we're striving to do. And again, we are willing to work with whomever we need to, to make it work for all people in the neighborhood, and bring the best community and the best support we can. So, thank you.
And one last question, sir, if the council were, if the council considered limiting your class size to the 20 you've discussed, is that something that you guys think you could work with?
That'd be absolutely fine with us. We, that would work for our business model and sustainability, yes.
Okay, thanks. Anything else before we close the record? Okay, seeing none, then we will close the record on this case and begin our deliberations. This is a special use request, and the zoning board is recommending body to the city council, so we'll be running through the standards for a special use. Is there any discussion before we run through those standards? Quiet. Okay. Standard number one, the requested special use is one of the special uses listed in the zoning ordinance. And I am going to lose track of my paper here. Thank you. Too many other papers here. And we see that indeed, a commercial indoor recreation is a special use within the mixed use employment district, which this is within.
I'd just add that the business as described also appears to meet the general definition for commercial indoor recreation facility.
Agreed, thank you. Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. Generally speaking, based on the use description that we've got, and the kind of understanding of the mixed nature of this, of this area, I think it definitely meets the standard in the fact that it's sort of, it is a use that blends itself between being sort of, you know, a little bit more bigger space industrial, but at the same time, a little bit more, a little bit more residential, want to be close to home. So I think that within that, it fits very well into the district. Standard number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. The special use, again, being requested regarding indoor recreation space, I don't think will have any sort of negative cumulative effect on the neighborhood. It's, you know, relatively quiet and obtrusive, and doesn't seem to be incompatible with anything else that's going on in the neighborhood, so I believe this standard has been met.
I agree. I'd also just add that the one issue that has been raised as a potential negative effect seems to be the issue of parking, but I think that this property is uniquely positioned because of the attached parking lot that it does have, which can offer spaces, sounds like almost a one-to-one ratio for people in a class, if indeed classes are limited to 20 people, there's 20 parking spaces.
Thank you. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. I think that, I certainly hope that this brings more people into the neighborhood, and more interest in the businesses that are in the neighborhood, and does further improve the sense of community that, I know several people that live in the area have been working to develop over the years. So I believe, I believe that this standard is met as well.
Agreed.
Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. This is an existing building with a very, sort of, I guess, low strain use, I would say, on public facilities and services. It's not creating, it's not using much, it's not creating much, it's not using much, many resources and not creating much waste. So I certainly think that this standard has been met.
I agree.
Standard number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. Matt alluded to this on standard number three, and I would agree. I think that it does sound like there are some traffic points to be considered in the neighborhood in general, however, specific to this property, particularly with available constraints regarding employee parking in the rear of the building, and then, you know, hopefully, everybody else using the parking lot that's right there for their use. I think that, I think that from that standpoint, this specific use should not cause undue congestion. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. I don't know if it's significant historical and architectural resources, but it is an existing masonry building within the area that we will be maintaining the use of. Standard number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, not too applicable, but we are continuing the use of the existing building. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. The petitioner at this point seems to have been working with the city in full compliance regarding its business and its activities, and we've not heard any other issues from staff regarding the property in question, so I believe this standard has been met as well. Moving on to suggested conditions, I would suggest a condition regarding employee parking in the rear of the building, so that we do maintain as many of those front spaces as possible.
I agree. Would we want to even further explore that by adding a condition that CrossFit E-Town would pursue agreements with any of the church parking lots, or is that?
I don't know that, I don't personally know that they need to, based on the capacity that's provided, because if you assume that, you know, in that type, given the use, I would say at least 10%, and it could very well be more, of people would not even be driving a car.
Well, right. I would assume that people are going to bike and/or run to get to their--
I think that there's, I think that there's, you know, a relatively good chance that, I mean, I, with Matt, think that there's pretty much like a one-for-one ratio of parking available compared to the people who would be driving.
I think if we also address, I noticed in the Spark Minute Meetings, and I didn't ask about this when we were taking testimony, but it mentioned the addition of a bicycle rack, and I think that definitely would be favorable, because I think it would encourage people to bike if there was someplace to put their bike once they got there, whether it be indoors, outdoors, or wherever.
Yeah, I think, I think we would definitely encourage the applicant to provide secure bike parking, and if that means finding a spot inside where it fits against a wall or something, so be it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Anyways, so getting back to the specific conditions, though, employee parking in the rear, I think, should be one of them. Hours, since we are trying to include those on all special uses at this point, are there any thoughts or objections regarding 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I was just wondering if we wanted to limit it on Saturday and Sunday? Like, not 5:00 a.m. on Saturday, Sunday?
I don't, I don't actually, given the nature of this business, I would be a little hesitant to limit them to the early hours. It's the middle of August, they might want to run 5:00, 5:00 a.m. classes on a Saturday, and there might be lots of people that would want to come then.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think they're going to come and scream or play super loud music, I hope.
Have you ever been to a CrossFit class?
Only watched them on video.
All right, so I had those two conditions. Were there any other, were there any other conditions that we wanted to add?
I think you had raised the issue about limiting classes to 20 members. I don't know if you are still wanting to pursue that, or?
I don't know if I'm a huge stickler on it, but I wanted to get the applicant's understanding on that, given that council may wish to do that because of the surrounding area.
I'm not necessarily in favor of limiting their class size. I think the classes will be limited by their capability of teaching them, so I don't want to dictate to their business model.
Okay, so employee parking hours, anything else to add before we entertain a motion?
Just the bike situation also, maybe.
I think that's part of parking.
Do you want to say some form of secure bike parking, or what do we want to, how do we, what are we asking for?
Secure bike parking.
Secure bike parking.
I think they just provide secure bike parking, which would encourage people to ride, and if all 20 people ride their bikes, I'm sure that they would make accommodations to, to provide secure bike parking for 20 people.
Okay. Okay. Works for me. That being said, is there a motion regarding the case?
I would move in the matter 12ZMJV0017, regarding 2125 Ashland Avenue, that we recommend approval to the city council for the establishment of a special use regarding a commercial indoor recreation facility with the following conditions: that employee parking is, our employees park in the rear of the building, that a bicycle rack with secure parking of bicycles be provided, and all efforts are made to encourage members to make use of the parking lot on the south side of the building. Further conditions, that the hours would be 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? None? So we got six of us tonight, so your motion is approved, or approved for recommendation to the city council, 6-0, so good luck with your project, you guys. Is there anything else for discussion before we adjourn? All right, we are adjourned, then. Thanks, everyone.